Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. I'll begin with, just on behalf of council in the District of Suk, note that we're formally acknowledging that the land on which we gather tonight is the traditional territory of the Coast Salish people, specifically the Sauk Nation, whose historical relationships with the land continue to this day. So, I'm acting mayor for January and February, and I'm called into action tonight because Mayor Tate, as many of you know, is currently in Cambodia this week on a trip in which she and other municipal leaders are sharing skills they've learned here with the local governments. Cambodian reps were here last summer, and this is the return visit. It's a great opportunity to learn about... Well, I emailed Mayor Tate this morning, and she got back to me late this afternoon. And she said, "Hello, Acting Mayor. Thank you for checking in. I'm very grateful to be part of this mission. I have arrived safely in Mandulkiuri Province. It was nearly 10 hours to travel here from Nam Pen. Despite the sad and horrific history, Cambodian people are very warm and friendly. The food is amazing, and the scenery in this remote area is beautiful. I am learning a lot about Cambodia's local government and culture, and though we are miles apart," and she means Suk and this part of eastern Cambodia, "there's much in common. Local government here, as in Suk, is about the people and improving the quality of life to those we serve, particularly our children. There is a cold weather alert. Temperatures are expected to drop to 17 degrees. Very windy here, and there is concern for the elderly and young children. I hope all is well at home and look forward to sharing more about my experience when I return on Sunday. Good luck with the meeting and have fun with it." So that's the mission statement tonight. So, on with the agenda. First, we have some new business supplementary information to add to the agenda. So that's in the yellow sheets here. Okay, thank you, Brenda. Parkinson, Councilor Parkinson. And we're now going to approve the agenda with this additional piece of supplementary information. Albedos. And we just need to move it. So we're all in agreement here at a committee of the whole. No need to second any of these motions. So we'll begin with the Lot A Charette. And Mr. Platel is here tonight, and so is Ivy. Maybe I'll just say a few things. Hello.
Hi, Chair Bateman. Just to, since we have a motion on the floor to receive the agenda with the extra supplemental, we need to have a vote on that.
I think we just did that.
No, we moved the beginning vote.
Oh, okay. Can we have a vote on that, please? All in favor? Okay. Approved. Thank you. Ms. Reer. So in tonight's package, you'll find a preliminary report on the Lot A Charette that took place in the first week of December. This, I think I'm just going to leave my notes aside here and invite Neil to the table here. Neil Platel is...
Or however you say it.
Paul Thiel. It's Neil Paul Thiel. And he is with Key Corp. And they've... Go ahead, Neil. Come on up. Thank you.
Hello. Yes. Hello, Mr. Chair, members of committee and council. My name is Niall Palthiel, here with Key Corp Planning. And with me is Stefan, and he is with StanTech, and he provided the architecture and design work for the Charette process. You always have to turn it on. So, there we are, introductions. So what we're going to do tonight is, I just want to kind of provide a little bit of context and background for how we got here, and then a little bit of context into the planning that goes into this process. And then ultimately, as well, I want to just kind of outline what we're receiving for community feedback so far, and how we kind of came up with our draft concept that we're going to present to you this evening, and then receive feedback from yourselves before going on to next steps. I think one of the important things to just highlight here really quickly, though, and I just don't want to understate this, is this is not the finished product. This is a draft product. So what the purpose of this meeting is, is to present what we have to date, answer any questions that you might have, and receive some feedback initially from yourselves this evening. We'll then refine that. We will then go to another open house where we'll put some boards up, show what we have so far, receive additional feedback from the public, and then take that back and present to council or committee the refined product. So there's a couple more steps to go before we finish up, but I just want to make that clear, so don't think that your feedback goes unnoticed at this point. So, just to provide some background, and as I'm sure you're all aware, but just for the public, in 2010, the official community plan of Suk, OCP bylaw 400, was adopted and included the vision for a town center. In 2016, 6671 Wadams Way, now known as lovingly as Lot A, was purchased by the District of Suk. And on Monday, May 8, 2017, there was a public meeting that was held by the district proposing a rezoning from the large lot residential to the mixed-use town center, CTC zone. At that point, council resolved to rezone the property to P2, which is the public institutional zone that it is today for community facilities. So as of 2017, it is zoned for community facility, and we were hired, being Key Corp Planning and StanTech, in 2018, late 2018, to conduct a Charette for Lot A. The other thing, just to highlight while we're here, is that the, it was also designated, when the lot was purchased, for a library to go on the site. That position has been determined by the Vancouver Island Public Library. It's approximately an acre of the lands. The purpose of our Charette going forward was to determine what was to be done with the remainder of the lot. The other thing, too, at that point, just to highlight, the, it was, the previous council had made a resolution that the lot would be designated for some sort of senior center, youth center, and affordable housing component, which is where we are today. And that was kind of part of the framework that began the conversation, I guess, from, as we think about what we're going to do with the lot. The other thing, too, just once again, when we're talking about context, something that we looked at going into this, the specific reference under the official community plan within economic development is to consider a college, art school, residential, commercial, mixed-use development, or seniors' housing on the vacant site adjacent to the Evergreen Mall. The 2009 Town Center Plan, in page seven, visions some sort of townhouse apartments and open space, including affordable housing, to ensure a mix of income and ages in the town center. Page 15, it has a retail goal, consider the development of the vacant site for commercial uses, require significant floor space, make sure that they don't compete with some of the retail intentions of the town center. And page 19, under land use goals for community uses, is to consider the development of a college or art school on the vacant site adjacent to the mall. So that's where it's mentioned in today's planning context. Now, we're just going to talk really quickly, and I'm sure you all know about this, but the purpose of the design Charette is to have members of the community participate with a design team, local government, staff, stakeholders, in a series of meetings to collaborate on design solutions. It's supposed to be a short timeframe, and as I'm sure you're aware, the Charette comes from when French design students were in their classes. They would procrastinate and leave things to the last minute, and they actually found, after doing this a few times, it was actually a really neat exercise to put you under pressure, get the creative juices flowing, and see what comes out. And it was under that pressure that they found they'd build consensus, they'd have great products, and come to neat resolutions. And so that's where the Charette has kind of come and evolved over time, and today it is a, it is a community-building process. So a Charette is about three to four consecutive days. It's an open process that includes interested parties, collaborative design processes, all disciplines, and short feedback loops. It shows a feasible plan and a logistic, or sorry, a general holistic approach that can actually be developed on once it concludes. Charette is not a one-day workshop. It's not a multi-day marathon of meetings and meetings and meetings, and it's not supposed to be just a select few that are making the plan. It's supposed to be involving many members of the community. So how did we go about generating community feedback? There were a few things, and we did know that engagement would be important, and we did want to make sure that we were as far-reaching as we possibly could be. That we developed what's called SukLotA.com, which is the website. I've got a picture of it up on the board. And if you haven't been, we really figured that in today's busy world, when families are working and people are busy with their day-to-day lives, it's important to have an online presence so that people who can't show up to a meeting have a chance to engage, learn about the process and what to expect, and provide feedback. So we have put it on the website, and it's a good one to check out. We've also, I went personally and door-knocked a number of the houses surrounding the Charette. The immediate neighbors spoke to them about what to expect during the Charette, answered any questions they might have had, and dropped off the invitation to the open house, which we did have our public open house on December the 8th, and we also had our Charette three-day workshop. So here's, I put this image on the board. This is the sign-in board where we had people come in from different places around Suk and place a dot where they came from. So I put the map up there just to give you a sense of who is coming in from where. So it was a good sample of the community with some good local representation. And then throughout the day during the Charette, we received a decent amount of feedback on different things, things we liked about Suk, things we wanted to improve, things we wanted to see improve for our grandchildren. We also looked into design elements. And one of the things I think it's important to point out at this point is, when we looked at the design guidelines, the interesting piece of feedback that we got, which I guess is a good thing, is council considers this when they're thinking about how they're redoing and implementing their official community plan, there did seem to be a significant amount of support for the guidelines in the downtown design guidelines that currently exist. That was something, first when interviewing members of council, I found that there was general support for the design guidelines. And then we did our Dotmocracy, and I had some examples that were not in-keeping and some that were in-keeping, and it was interesting to see that people really do like the seaside kind of west coast contemporary design guidelines for the downtown. So throughout the community feedback, some of the things that we heard very clearly from both members of council, from members of the community, stakeholders, and in general, support for public plaza space, support for community groups, not-for-profit organizations, there's a youth space component that people were interested in, seniors' drop-in center, some sort of healthcare support, connectivity and awareness with the library space there. There needed to be decent parking, but people didn't want necessarily a parking lot. Also, public art. One of the things, door knocking, and I'm sure you're aware of this, is when the trees were removed on the property previously, rain-water management was a concern. There's been some rain runoff, obviously, on the neighboring properties, and so addressing that on the property was obviously a concern raised by some of the adjacent neighbors. Affordable housing, tree retention where possible, community gathering space, and First Nations art and landscaping components were also things that we picked up in the community feedback that was fairly consistent throughout the different groups and folks we dealt with. Once again, and I mentioned this at the beginning, I'll just restate it now. Throughout October through December, we kind of, we looked at the planning documents, got background on the project and what's, and Lot A. We conducted the Charette and the significant amount of engagement in November and mainly in December of 2018. We're now in the feedback loop portion of the plan, where we're coming to committee, receiving feedback, and then going to be going back to the public also to help refine the plan. And then February 2019 is when we're hoping to present to you a final plan. Depending on the timing for the public meeting, that may get pushed back, and if we hear tons and tons of feedback from the public, then that also may shift our forecast a little bit, but we're trying to stay on schedule. And now I'm going to pass things over to Stefan, who is going to go over the bit of the Lot A Charette, and then present the most recent concept for the site. And I will turn it over to you.
Hi. My name's Stefan Scholson. I'm with StanTech, an architect in the Victoria office, and I joined with Niall to, for the community Charette. And so I'll walk through a little bit of our process and kind of where we arrived and how we got there. So on the first, I mean, we had the first day, we did some introductions and whatnot. And then on the Saturday, everybody got together, and we met in the morning. There were tables laid out, split into groups, and just with some trace paper, maps of the site, and we were given some ideas. First, we were asked, how are people going to move on the site? Pedestrians, transit, vehicles, gathering in public space. And then there were a couple of items that we were asked where they might go, such as the seniors and youth drop-in center, the affordable housing component, or public plaza components. And so the groups were then left to their, to discuss amongst themselves, generate some bubble diagrams, some really loose ideas about what they think might happen. The only piece that really was fixed, does the pointer not really work? Hold it up. There's a, okay, never mind. Anyways, the only fixed point on the site really was the library portion up in the, I guess, the northwest corner. If I had a pointer, I'll show you where that is, but anyways, we'll carry on. So that was the first exercise of the morning. We then went, took a walk down to the site and actually walked around, had a look at what it actually looks like. And when you get on there, you can see that it actually, it has a fairly significant drop from Wadams Way down into the middle of the site. It actually comes out sort of somewhere between three and four meters, so around 12, 13 feet. So it's fairly significant, and that was one of the features that sort of started to inform what, some of the design directions that came forward from that. On there, you can see that there is a fair bit of water, sort of in the lower right corner on the site. There are, have been some drainage ditches carved in there to try and manage that, but there is definitely some water management issues that will come out as the site is developed. We then came back to the, back to the studio here, as it were, and further developed some ideas. And what we found as we went through that was that there were some really consistent, consistent ideas that started to come out. There was the idea of the senior center. It was fairly, real consensus that that would be a really good piece to have front, upfront, facing onto Wadams Way, easy access, so up in that northeast corner, top corner of the site, across from the library, library being on the northwest, and then seniors as a component of a larger building that might incorporate some things like another, like a youth center, because there's some, sort of a symbiotic relationship there, as well as incorporating the affordable housing component, which would be seen as a feasible way to sort of, to bring this, bring this to reality. Other ideas that were really, that everybody seemed to hit on was the idea of a large public gathering space down in the southwest corner. It would be probably the brightest, it would, most open corner of the site, and in that area, we would then have opportunities for things like a marketplace for the farm market, where you could actually have, possibly have permanent structures, so it could operate year-round. There was, we talked about single access to the site, so rather than cutting it up with a bunch of driveways, have a single access point, bringing everybody in one way, down past the library, past the senior center, into the heart of the site. Incorporating a roundabout as a feature point of it, where we could actually, you could have a focal point, you can incorporate some public art, or, you know, a landscape feature, something like that, that happens right in the middle. There was a lot of discussion about health center, because I know that's an important topic out here, since we're such a large community now, and that's a growing need, so there's definitely a lot of traction for that. How that might take shape, you know, whether it's incorporated as part of a larger private development, that's obviously something that happens in the future, but there's certainly ample, oh, there it is. It does work, sort of.
It just doesn't show on the TV.
It doesn't show on the television. Never mind. Okay. Okay. Anyways, this sort of down in the southeast corner, there was a, seemed like the logical place for it. There's already some health facilities in Evergreen Mall. You know, it would be a natural extension as that expands, that, you know, here's a spot for it. We also discussed connections to the mall site. The owner of the mall was with us for a little while on the Saturday, and talked about having a potential access point down at the, I guess, in the southeast corner. You would compass the loading bay for Western Foods, and then having pedestrian access on the southwest, I guess northwest of their property, just past the shoppers. Printing's a little small here, but anyways, there were, Niall's already touched on the consistent ideas, things like tree preservation, which there, we discussed a lot, it was really consistent that there was a lot of open space, a lot of gathering space, creating kind of a courtyard amongst the buildings that were in there. So from this, I then took this information and developed out, sketched out a couple of options for what we might see on the site. So, top-left corner is the library site. That is, we treated that as kind of a fixed entity. And then from there, the top-right corner would be a three-to-four-story senior center, mixed-use, affordable housing. You could have, possibly integrate a second building in the middle, and then another down in the bottom, with the central axis leading down to the roundabout, which would then, in the future, as part of sort of the longer range vision, could potentially create a connection to Waterview Street, down through the big roundabout, should the Evergreen Mall ever get redeveloped. There's also potential along the southern edge of the property to create a bit of a streetscape, more of a park-like streetscape that could potentially interact with the mall. It could provide an impetus for their redevelopment going forward. We all, that led to natural connection points on the east and west side over to Townsend and to Anna Marie Road. Way down the road, this is not, nobody needs to panic, but, but in the event of future development, you'd have the potential for some through-block connection to further tie the, tie the connectivity of the site to the rest of the community. Along Wadams, we looked at transit stops. One of the transit reps was here with us as well, and she was quite excited to see that, the potential to create a larger transit hub along Wadams. Certainly on the, in the front of the youth and family center, there's quite a bit of space there, with another drop-off in front of the library heading the other direction. What's happening there?
I'm back.
Okay. Kind of got two, oh, there we go. Okay. So here's the second option, just taking some of the ideas, consolidating the buildings into maybe into two, creating more of a larger courtyard area, moving the roundabout to the middle of the site, so that you would distribute out, excuse me, creating a little bit more surface parking, more surface parking down along the southern, south edge, so little less building, building footprint on the site. Just... Okay.
We're kind of used to it.
Yes. Oh, there we go. All right, we're back. Okay. We can, this is fine. So anyways, just some variations on the site, potentially introducing a commercial component down in the southwest corner, adjacent to the public plaza, that could be accessed from Evergreen. You know, introducing just a little bit more diverse use on the site. In the, certainly discussed in the, as part of the larger discussion in the healthcare building, you know, there's opportunities there for some small commercial that's related to that building. You know, maybe a small pharmacy, maybe there's a coffee shop that focuses on the use of this site. So, from there, I then, since those were my one-in-the-morning sketches, we then took it and refined it a little bit further, and took a look at, put some more, a little bit more concrete sizing and dimensioning to the site, just to get a really, a more clear idea. So this here is a, what I would consider the phase-one and overall parking scheme of the plan. In this iteration, the library still exists in the top-left corner of the site. The top-right, we would then integrate surface parking underneath the building. That was certainly a consistent point of discussion, that people didn't really want to see this, you know, Evergreen Part Two, where we've got, you know, a site covered in asphalt with cars and some buildings around the perimeter. So the strategy here was to integrate a little bit of street parking through, throughout the site, down the center spine, and then off to the side, kind of splits off in the middle over to the right. You get about 50, I believe I was at about 50 to 60 stalls on the surface parking, distributed throughout. That serves a couple of purposes. Visitors entering into the building can easily park in front. We also get the opportunity, it helps slow traffic down and keep it from being, from people driving faster than they should through the, through the site. As I mentioned, there's about a four-meter drop, so it lends itself really naturally to coming down into the site. You would get the main level of this first building at the top-right corner would front on, actually, the second level of the building fronts onto Wadams Road. So you could have, integrate a drop-off site right in front, have your senior center right there, easy access, handy darts, people, cars pulling up, dropping off, really easy access, and then have the upper portion of it as your affordable housing component. On the, as we go down into the site, the main level, so it's actually down, you could then integrate a multipurpose space youth center, as well as all your building storage, building services. And all of the parking, under, in this iteration, I get in the neighborhood of a plus or minus 80 surface stalls tucked in there. So with an affordable housing project, typically you would reduce the parking count. It's not necessarily one per unit, because we can get upwards of 80 units in this, in a four-to-six-story combination-type building. So there's ample space to incorporate that, and then still have quite a bit of surface parking for visitors and other users. And that doesn't touch on to how much parking the library is proposing, which is significant. There are up over 50 stalls, is what they're calling for. So your large surface parking is happening up there. The rest of the site, down along the, sort of the bottom-left corner, public plaza, incorporating a public washroom kind of in the middle, there's a gray spot just to the south of the library, which would serve the public plaza, as well as, you know, bus drivers. It was certainly comment from TransLink rep that the bus drivers, especially when you're at a, more of a transit hub, they want to have a quick break. It gives them access to that. We can incorporate some water, water feature as a rainwater, site-water retention as part of the public plaza. I've just shown it as a small, a small blue space there. The green spaces in the public plaza are indicative of areas where we can perhaps retain some of the, some of the site trees that exist. Obviously, there's a variety of trees, and those would have to be identified, which ones are really important, which are really critical. Our farmer's market down at the bottom-left corner, I can sort of see where I'm pointing. And then that's directly accessed from this area here, that's sort of working, where we've got the pedestrian access from Evergreen, and then our farmer's market area is in there. This is our future connection down to Waterview. We're maintaining, aligned with our central roundabout, along this bottom-south edge, what I would term a woonerf. It's kind of a Dutch term for a multimodal street, pedestrian, bicycle vehicles kind of last, but it's for everybody to use, typically somewhat meandering, sort of a park-like setting. I've got an indicative example on a later slide here to show you. And then with this, in this initial phase, we would then... park-like setting. I've got an indicative example on a later slide here to show you. And then with this, in this initial phase, we would then leave the southeast corner as basically an undeveloped open space. And what form that takes, there, you know, it would have to be tidied up a little bit since it's, it's pretty rough right now, but certainly the trees can be retained. It can just be a landscape space because there's, there's not really a timeline for a health center. It's obviously contingent on a lot of bigger factors coming into there. One other feature of this, given that the, the building sort of splits the affordable housing seniors complex, you get, you introduce sort of an upper plaza, which would be level with Wadham's that you could come right off to into the back of the senior center area. And then you can also have a lower, a, a lower plaza, which would front onto, say, a potential youth center, which would be like a multipurpose type space. This is then my phase, the phase two component of it. In this, we start to introduce the health center building down in the southeast corner, which could be a four to six wood store, wood frame building, incorporate the house, health center, perhaps it has private resident, or, yes, you could have residential component on the upper portion depending on partnerships and how that, how that all works. Given the, sort of the limitations of the site, that one, that building then would lend itself to an underground parking structure, which I think is more viable for a building such as a health center where you've got a different, different funding level as opposed to an affordable housing project, which was part of the reason for incorporating the, the surface parking under the building. At any rate, the, the bulk of the parking component would be, not be just general surface parking. The other features I think I've mostly touched on for this, so jump forward one. Here, we've done a couple of building sections, so cutting through the site, so the top section. In, below the green pointer there, that's Wadham's, so that's just to give you, just to orient yourselves. To the left is the Suuk Youth Center, and over here would be our phase one building.
I just can't see where you're pointing.
Okay.
Johnny, can you turn your mic on?
For the video.
Okay. Are we good? Okay. So Wadham's Way, Suuk Youth Center over on this side. What we've laid it out as in this, in this iteration, and it's, there's no reason this can't be a connected, one larger structure, but I thought the idea would be to break it up a little bit so that we don't have one giant mass. It would all be over a single podium, which would then extend over the parking structure. That way we'd get our, our surface parking out of public view. We have the access between the two buildings, so coming in and over for the affordable housing component, over and then down for the, the health center building, and whatever other components are on the upper, upper floors. You know, I mean, I think the general thought would be that that could be market residential housing up in there. This could be, this right now, we're showing is five stories and six, which is all doable wood frame, fairly economical construction. This would accommodate about 65 to 80 units in there. Senior center fronting onto the, onto Wadham's, so you can see that we've got this level access in there. Bus drop-offs out front as we come down. As I mentioned, that's about a four meter drop, as I've shown, so dropping into the site. We then head this way into Evergreen Mall. We've got our woo-nurf component down here, more and more of the park-like setting, which would then front onto the lower floor of this building and the back of Evergreen. This is cutting crossways through the site. Here's the library site, two-story building, you know, they've got the parking out to the side, fronting onto the, onto Wadham's. Their accesses, they've got an access onto, onto the street as well as a secondary, secondary slash main access from underneath the building. So that gives you just a bit of context on how that's going to sit relative to the site. Up in there, that would be the level of Wadham's Road, and this is down, taken down, kind of in this area, cutting through. This, the affordable housing component is here. As you can see, we masked up. This portion here is out at the front. This here is at the back, and then we've got open to the back for parking area. Ample room around the perimeter for any buffering to adjacent properties. So we, I've laid it out with about a three to four meter landscape buffer on the lot A side of the property, plus whatever they've got in their backyard. So, to try and keep it so from looming over those, those adjacent properties. And so we just throw in a few examples of what, what we can see as sort of part of, part of the discussion. This is obviously the library. That's part of their, their package that they've, that the other, the library architects have developed. Idea, examples of water retention, water features, can turn it into a, into a landscape feature to help control some of the onsite water, water issues. Opportunities for things like a bandstand. This is the Sydney Bandstand, a good example, sort of a sculptural piece gets well-used in the community. Large open space for performances and things like that. Just as a large plaza, this is up at Whistler, where you've got a stage, big open gathering areas, not a formal, you know, English-style park. It's more organic than that. Lots of space for people to, to get together and, and congregate. Market building, we're looking at an idea, Grand Island came to mind, the Byward Market in Ottawa, where, buildings where you can open up. So, summertime, totally open, people can come, move back and forth. You've got central aisles for people, for shoppers. Wintertime, it can be closed down on a, on a colder day, you know, pretty, pretty tough winters here, obviously. But, so it could run year-round. Obviously, and there's lots of market activity that, that goes on year-round. Maybe it shifts from produce to arts and crafts and things like that, but there's lots of opportunity for that. With this paved road component down here, gives us an opportunity for things like a food truck area, because you can come down the central drive, pull into here. It's, it's not impacting any through-traffic, so you can just, just be closed off. And on market days or event days, that's something that can happen, can cater to not only the plaza but also to users at Evergreen and be a real transition area for, for bringing people both directions. In the roundabout right here, just an example, up in Ladysmith, where I'm originally from, they've got one right as you come into town. They've got a great big anchor. It's just a, a feature, just as an example of something that, that he can do, give you a bit of a, an icon as you come down to the site. This is an example of what I'm discussing, talking about when we're talking about a woo-nurf. You know, typically you'd have a brick paved surface, so it's a little bit, it's not, definitely not an asphalt surface. Lots of planting, typically not a straight road, slows traffic down, gives pedestrians ample opportunity to use it, becomes a really pleasant, pleasant space. There's a Granderson Road in Langford is a decent example of it, Brynmar, sort of, where you've got, you know, rollover curves. Cars can pull off to the side, but there's, there's lots of planting, lots of activity happening on it. We've got, again, paved sidewalks, starts to animate itself depending on what's happening. There's a lot of discussion about things like a coffee shop, you know, a corner like here where we get tables out, that's going to cater to not only shoppers from here but also people using the, the plaza. The buildings, the form typically just sort of a, kind of a typical example of a four to six story wood frame type structure. Multipurpose space down here in the lower youth center plaza, fronting onto this lower plaza area, and then the senior center up at the top with the back plaza. Typical paving surface, getting away from asphalt, more towards the brick textured paving surface. Definitely gives a lot more character, lot more inviting. And they're, you know, these are pretty stable surfaces. They're not, not typically a concern for tripping hazards or anything like that. So, I think I'll turn it back to Matt.
Thank you very much. So, just to, just to recap really quickly, I've got some points up here, just for, for kind of awareness, just things that we're talking about for public gathering spaces, how we connect multimodally, housing, land uses and other kind of design guidelines, how we incorporate public art and signage, landscaping and management. But before that, I think, a couple of things just to, to, to kind of express before I, I turn it over to, to committee for discussion, is there's probably, just like any development or proposal that may occur within, within the District of Suuk, there's going to be additional due diligence that's required that's outside of the scope of what we're here to talk about this evening. For instance, when, you know, it was mentioned rainwater management, it may be, you know, council's purview to, to look into a biologist and when it comes to the tree retention, an arborist report that would help outline that and make sure that you're, you're, you're replacing things or, or removing things in a, in a, in a sensitive matter. And then the other thing that's less outside of our control but something that we want to make, to make sure this plan is actually implementable and future-proof, I guess, is the fact that there's going to be, you know, with the exception of the library, which is pretty well-fixed and, and isolated in that direction, there's, there's a number of other things that are going to impact how, when, and when this project is completed, right? So, we want to make sure, whether it's, you know, grant funding for the senior center or some sort of healthcare, which would then be provincial and other government funding. If you do decide to go in the direction of a, of a, of a P3, which we want to have not necessarily as a foregone conclusion, but something that is possible in this site, so a, a public-private partnership with the, with the development community. So having private funding be able to help impact the proposal, so how the funding model looks, and then also how B.C. Transit interacts with the, with the street-fronted. So, there's, there's a number of things that basically would have to occur. We're trying to turn this site into something that is as kind of, as, as fertile as possible for those, for those things to happen in a, in a feasible way. And, and the way that Stefan's designed this is that you, you, you start the conversation at the front of the property where you've got the library space already going, and then the, and then on the other side, the, the potential senior center and, and housing, housing area. And then slowly, as whether his funding comes available, as the housing market can bear it, or as, or as your, your provincial or federal funding comes available for other aspects of the project, you can then start to build out that community center where you've got your, your farmer's markets, your public plaza, your gathering, your youth, you know, your youth, youth aspects and your landscaping. So it kind of allows it to, to unfold as the, as, as the, the market and as the other levels of government kind of slowly come to the table over time. So it does allow you to bank a little bit of the land as well. And then the other thing, just to, to touch on really quickly, that I'm hoping to basically just put out there for discussion is, there's really, if, if you were to look at the project, the, the, the site in, in, in four, you've got the library section, the plaza section, the seniors center section, and then the, the healthcare or the, the other section for, you know, the kind of placeholder section, if you will. The, my recommendation at this point would probably be, and this is something I would come forward with later in a more concrete way, would be to look at subdividing that into four sections, and then it gives you an ability to have a conversation as a council about how you, how you zone that, right? So your zoning options, as I see it, would be three. You could either adopt the CTC zone, which would allow for the library and, and a downtown use and, and a number of other uses, and that's quite an open-ended multi, you know, mixed-use, multifamily development. It's the highest density zone that you have in your downtown center. Or, we could do a mix zone where the entire, if we're looking at the property, the entire, it's right there. So the entire right side of the property, being the library side, looking at it from Wadham's Way, is the P2 zone that it currently is. Oh. So, in this case, okay, so looking at this screen, it's, so the left side, the Wadham's, the, the library side and the plaza side could remain the P2 zone because everything we've talked about so far is completely complementary and permissive use within that zone. And then everything on the other side, because there is a housing component and housing's not currently allowed, and there's a height component and height's not currently granted, so there, there would be a number of uses that would have to be considered on the other side. So you could rezone just those two portions of the four quadrant property. The third option, which we could explore as well in a recommendation, once again, subject to committee's discussion, is, do we, do we consider a comprehensive development, a CD zone, that is completely customized to the site, which then, because I know it's a bit of concern from both my meetings with the Suuk Economic Development Committee and, and a, and a couple of members of the public, is the idea that because this is currently public land, you don't necessarily want the private commercial businesses competing with the private sector on the, you know, on the, on the service commercial side. So we could do a CD zone. Maybe you're okay with, as Stefan alluded to, maybe you're okay with a coffee shop and, and/or a pharmacy here, but maybe you're not okay with, you know, a, a deli or a, or a, or a restaurant or something that may get a little bit more into competing with, with other, other public, or sorry, other private vendors in the downtown core. You could theoretically design a CD zone that, that meets those, you know, that, that allows for those permissive uses in a, in a more closed and restrictive way that then kind of provides the public some assurance that you're not going to just flip it off to, to a developer and, and, and so long see you guys. So anyway, so that, so those are, those are kind of the three options I'm, I'm, I'm interested in feedback for, and, and we're obviously open to direction. But obviously, I, I would add the caveat here, and, and this is why we're here, is we want to make something and, and provide you with a, with a product and a, and a vision that, that is implementable within reason. We don't want to give you a, a, a beautiful plan, some pretty pictures and some, some text that, that ends up on a shelf and never, never acted on. So, that is, that is the, that, that's the dose of reality I'll, I'll leave you with. And if that's everything and you're satisfied, I will turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. That's, that's a lot to take in, and it, it's really remarkable work. I, I snuck into the, onto Lot A today through a little gap in the fence behind Evergreen Mall. And, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a field of dreams, 5.2 acres. This, Stefan, I think you really, on, on first blush, you've really captured a lot of the key elements that, that Charette engagement came up with. I, I just wanted to cite some of these dotmocracy, the, the highlights of some of these clean, green, accessible was part of the overall vision statement. A community gathering space with west coast feel. This, this Lot A will set the tone for development in Suuk's town center. The, the, yeah. So, I think we're off, wonderful start. So let's just be clear on the process going forward. This committee of the whole will discuss this, receive your report for information. You're seeking the council, a recommendation tonight, the council endorsed the general concept plan as presented here. And I certainly personally would like to have some more time to sit with all of this and review, review your presentation tonight. However, that's for further discussion. So, yeah, over to council. Questions, comments? Yes, Ebony.
Thank you. I first want to say that, Niall, you should be very proud of yourself. I think the first time we met, it was when we were both running for council the first time, and on a radio show, and they were asking us about why youth should be engaged in local politics and community development. So it's just really fantastic to see a young person not only succeeding on their own council, but also assisting our council in creating a town center. That's really cool. We have some young people in the audience today. I know they're inspired by that as well. Stephen, thank you so much. I was looking at the two initial drawings, and I was, I liked concepts from both of them, and then other parts, I was like, oh no, like, this isn't going to work. This is, I was like, kind of feeling sick to my stomach, like, oh crap. of feeling sick to my stomach, like, oh crap. Sorry, excuse me. But everything that I was concerned about, you addressed with this, and I absolutely love it. I really, really love what you've done. I think keeping the green space for now and land banking that to wait and see what else might come in the future is extremely important. I know I've heard that from other people. Having the roundabout feature at the end is just so fantastic, and it addresses any of the concerns I had about pedestrians crossing from one corner to the next. I love how much space we have for just open park area with and without the land banking aspect. And I just, I really, really love what you've done. Thank you so much. Hopefully, the community has good things to say about it, too. One thing I was hoping that we could touch on, perhaps through staff, was just the access to Evergreen Mall. I know that there was some concern in the public regarding the access and that it should be like a through road. But I also know, and I'm not the best to speak on it, perhaps Ms. Campbell can speak to it through you, of course, that there were some challenges in creating that connectivity.
Would you like to?
Yes, I remember through, through your worship to Councilor Logan, some discussion during the charrette regarding that access on the southeast corner being like an actual road. I was hoping that I nixed that quickly during the charrette. I mean, you can see it's just one lot in from an actual public road. You wouldn't, it would, it would act more like an interior drive aisle than, than in a public road. Maybe, maybe Stefan might want to add to that.
Sure. I think, based on our discussion, the Evergreen Mall owners, they said if, in the event that there were to be vehicle access, that would be where they'd want it. So I just lay, I've labeled it just strictly as potential vehicle access, which could then tie into that bottom road. They were very receptive to the idea of pedestrian access and also noted that should this go ahead and evolve, then, given the age of their buildings and the Western Foods building, that there, they, at that point, you know, maybe then they consider redeveloping and, and turning the focus not just out towards a parking lot, but back in towards the Lot A stuff. So I think that creates an opportunity down along that bottom park-type, park-like road, rather than having it just as a vehicle. But it could actually be a bit of an impetus to spur that, that change if it happens.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Councilor Beddoes.
Yeah, I must say, put a lot of work into it, and it's interesting to see what the community comes back with. I do understand that it is still a field of dreams. And, but it's unique property. And of course, a lot has to happen for a lot of these things to come to bear. But one thing I did like was your recommendation for a CD zone, a customized to site, because this site is unique, and I think it'd take a fair bit of input. So I thank you for that option, because I was trying to see how it fit in with some of the other zonings. And maybe it's so unique that we need to have its own zoning. So yeah, I'm in favor of going ahead with this.
Councilor St. Pierre.
One of the things that I noted when I was on site was the water. And I was surprised to find out that what looked like a stream might actually be a ditch. But that's okay. What I'm also aware of at this point in time is that we're looking at some really dry summers and probably some drier weather. And I know that we have to take that into account in terms of our landscape management, in terms of trees and so on and so forth. One of the things that I know does work is to have a series of ponds. I know that I found out during our trip with Parks, that the Demamuel Creek Golf Course is actually mostly supplied with water by a series of ponds, based on the height and so on and so forth. So it'd be interesting to see what we can do with this site in terms of managing the water, maybe maintaining what could be a ditch, but it looks a lot like a stream. It does give it a certain character. So it'd be interesting to see that incorporated into the designs if we can.
Okay. So I, I, I too really, really like this projec, this, this will be phased development over probably five to 10, perhaps longer years. So there's a lot of options going forward. I'm happy to announce that on Saturday at the Victoria Island Regional Library AGM, they announced that as of this week, we'll be receiving a development permit application. And for a project that there will be seeking $7.5 million up to, to build this, this library. They hope to break ground in the spring. So that's, that's big news. The first VRL Library, Viral, as they call themselves, arrived in Suk in 1963. So 56 years later, we will be seeing the start. They think it'll take at least a year. They have a lease on the library on Anne-Marie Road until June of next year. So that maybe is their, I would imagine that's their target date. So that's great news. And, and just thanks to, to previous councils who, you know, this process dates back to 2005 with this library. And there was a lot of back and forth, and we held the line in a number of ways. We, we finally found some land to, to lease to the library, Viral. That's a requirement to move forward. They have 39 branches across the island and the Gulf Islands. And so that, that's great news. So that'll be the starting point. And then through the Age Friendly Committee, which I sit on, and that's through the Suk Region Community Health Network, at the last meeting and a couple of weeks ago, Andrew Moore presented some timelines. It was a 10-point series of steps towards what will be, currently, it's a $1.5 million project. Public and private fundraising will begin a little later this year. And then there's a whole series of steps. They're hoping to get a Canada Infrastructure Grant to move forward. And again, you know, there's, we, we keep saying the senior, senior center, it's really, it's community center, multi-generational gathering place, is the new phraseology for this. And it sounds like you, from what I saw there, there's, you've created a really strong template to, to begin, begin work on. And so once, once we've finished here tonight, there will be another public open house to, is that correct?
Correct, yes. So the, the, through the chair, the, the intent would be if we'll take your feedback, we'll refine what we, we have presented, and then there'll be a public open house and through the website, of course. And, and I, my target for that would be the week pending staff availability of February the 11th for, for that. That would give enough notice so we could get a, something in the Gazette. I can, there was about 28 members of the community who have signed up as subscribers to the website for updates, and they got notified on the first one. They'll get notified on this, this iteration as well, as well as charrette goers and everything, just as a, as a, as a check-in for, for how we're, how we're doing. And, and that would also be a chance for, as you mentioned, you're, you're just getting your, council's, you're getting your head around this. So that would be a chance for, for everyone to provide a final round of feedback before I present a report to council.
So you'll be taking material we're, we're speaking on tonight to refine. I'm wondering whether, if we're moving this forward to a formal council meeting. As I said earlier, I'm a little hesitant to endorse the general concept plan tonight in principle, without having a chance to really get in there and, and dive in. So I'm wondering whether this can come up as an agenda item at our next council meeting, where we can all provide you with fuller input. Okay.
Sorry, the committee of the whole is where we can discuss for more information. And then when we move this, it would move to the regular council meeting. So it would come to the next agenda, just as you suggested.
Okay.
And let me, the other thing, just to be clear, too, in the, in the language, the endorsement, as you mentioned, is more for the concept in principle.
Right.
It's still a working document.
Yes.
And we can still receive feedback. So the endorsement isn't necessarily saying, you know, A+, this is, go build this tomorrow. It's more saying, we endorse you sending this to the public for feedback.
Okay.
If that helps as well.
Yeah, that does help. Thank you. Okay, Councilor Parkinson.
Through, through the chair. I would just like to state that the previous council on the CD zone, we had the discussion about making the property a CD zone, and council turned it down because the property was to be for the people of Suk and for what they wanted, and not for developers to come and develop what they wanted. And that was the reason for that. In regards to the, the creek, the stream, the, the ditch, whatever you'd like to call it, speaking with residents of Anne-Marie and people who have lived there their entire lives and built their homes there, they had stated, and I mentioned at the charrette and asked to have information brought back on this, was that the creek was a regis, was registered back in the day, and that the people building their home there were not allowed to build within a certain distance of it. So I would just like to know if that truly is that or if it's not. And I personally like the feature that when we have our area developed, if it were a creek or whatever, that it still stay there. I think that would be a, an amazing addition to the area. The other thing is, we made a notice, a motion, or I did, to bring a tree protection and heritage bylaw, and that will be coming to council in February for discussion. And I was wondering if we had an arborist or anyone go through the property to determine the trees that are placed on this property. I did walk through it, as I mentioned at the charrette, with someone who looked after the trees in Chilowack. And there are a lot of trees that are on that property. There is a section with 10 Douglas firs that are all bunched together that are between 50 and 80 years old. And it would be a real shame for us to go and have that all cut down. So I was just, what, I would like to see that we go through the property and see where trees of value or importance to the community actually stay. And they might be in great spots where it can be built around, or there's one where the market is, a section there that wouldn't have to be taken away. So I think that would be really detrimental to what we're trying to do on our piece of land. And besides that, I like what you're doing. Thank you.
I think Alex.
Oh, Al, sorry, I missed you.
I had my.
I was actually interested in the Woonorf concept when you described it further, you know, in terms of traffic calming and allowing multi-use. And I was curious about, especially with food trucks, possible stalls for vendors and so on and so forth, it seems like it would invite that sort of activity, whether or not it might make sense to have this sort of thing extending in other directions.
Well, I think the intent of, of the pla, the intent of the Woonorf is that you basically have, it, it bleeds over from the landscape into the roadway. So you define it with a rollover curb, just a, like a flush curb. So you don't have, you know, a regular six-inch curb. So you can, so, you know, vehicles can move over, you know, if, if one has to pass, they're typically maybe a little bit narrower than a, a standard roadway. So there'd be ample opportunity with it running, especially by the plaza, depending on what the plaza surfaced with. And I mean, the thought would be that there'd certainly be areas of it, maybe not the whole thing, that you'd have hard surface, pavers, something like that. So there would be a natural extension of that Woonorf roadway into the, into the plaza area.
Specifically thinking maybe from the library, just because you've got, you know, constant.
Absolutely.
There's, there's a connection that could be made there with traffic happening and so on. So it's just a...
Yeah. And I think the, the only thing I would maybe caution on that is you don't really want cars driving through there. So you want to keep them on that central access. It lends itself to kind of coming down a little bit on the, on the south edge. But you definitely don't, but you would be able to pull a vehicle if there was an event.
At need?
At need, absolutely. Yeah.
So just a, yeah, thank you. The man with the pencil, so.
Counselor Beddoes?
No, I'm fine.
You're fine. Counselor Logan's.
I did forget earlier to thank the staff, especially Mr. Diebler and Ms. Campbell for helping our contractors with this project, because I know you put a lot of work into it. And I think the charrette process went really well, despite my initial weirdness about it. But it was, it was a fantastic process. So thank you very much.
Okay. So we will have some public input opportunities here in a second. I just had a few more things to say. I, I, it was, you mentioned the aesthetic and the, the confirmation of our town center guidelines in, in terms of the dotmocracy process. And I just saw in, in the favored photos, a lot of exposed timber and beams and trusses, lots of glass and light. I noted the favorites were the Suk Brewing Company and our former laundromat got a lot of, and I'm sure if Casa had a photo of it had been there across the street. I don't know if you've seen that building. It's very striking. So there's some really great templates here for future development. Yeah. So, thank you. And I assume we'll, we'll be receiving a, a copy of this PowerPoint. Yeah. And you were saying February 11th, which is a Monday night.
Sorry, that's the week of February.
The week of February 11th. And would you, okay.
I'm not here on the 11th.
You're, we have a regular council meeting on February 11th. So you're thinking of a, of a weekend or a, a weeknight for this?
Whatever, whatever serves committee, yeah.
You're at our beck and call.
Exactly. Just not, just, I have a standing, I have a standing on Valentine's Day. I might get in trouble if I miss it.
You're newly married.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay, good. You don't want to blow that one. Okay.
Through, through the chair, that the open house is mainly geared for the public anyway, so it would likely be in an evening scenario.
Okay. All right. So I guess we need a motion to, hello, Brenda.
Through, through you, the chair. I'd just like to say that most of, I think all of council is away the 12th, 13th, and 14th. And I definitely would like to attend so I can hear what the public has to say.
Councilor Math.
At that session, will you please bring all three examples of the potential rezonings that you discussed? So to keep it the way that it is, to separate it into four quadrants, or to do your, I can't remember what the third one was, the CD.
A custom zone.
Yeah. Can you bring all three of those options forward and then include the EDG's concerns on the, the CLT development that you discussed? Like the EDG has concerns about us parcelling away that land.
Okay, so, okay. Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Counselor St. Pierre.
In terms of actually making the, the final product, as you put it, viable, and, you know, something that we can actually realize, I'm pretty sure that you've got some ideas in terms of funding models. And you've alluded to, you know, for example, that a health building might actually, you know, have grant money or, you know, provincial or federal monies available, whatever it might be. I'm interested in looking at different options in terms of funding the future phases of development. So if you happen to have some thoughts that we could put forward to the public and see, you know, what actually resonates, that'd be good. If it's a private partnership, I'm, I'm interested in seeing what that might look like in terms of best practices and so on and so forth. Thank you. And great work.
Okay. So I'll look now for some advice. Oh, Councilor Logan's.
Yeah, I know, talking too much tonight.
No, you're not.
Just wanted to move staff recommendation to receive and endorse.
Public.
Oh, or doing public and...
No.
Cancel up.
Good try.
Tableau.
Well, thank you very much. If you, you two could step back for the time being, and we'll open the mic for public comment. I see a few people who were at the charrette here tonight. If anyone has any thoughts or, these committee, committees of the whole are this wonderful opportunity for this kind of conversation. And I don't see any takers. So I, hello. Gail Armitage. Gail Armitage?
Do you have to sit down?
You want to switch on the mic there?
Okay. Gail Armitage, I live at 2345 Henland Drive here in Suk. I don't know how to put this. I really, really, really think that when we're doing this, that the key, the key point in mind, I think, should be what it's going to look like. It's visual attractiveness. So for me, the trees and the park part here in that little section there is critically important. And I'm also endorsing the comments that were made about even marking the trees that are getting on in age, because one of the things that we are missing in this part of the world now are old trees. And I think we should be grabbing the trees that are sort of, you know, a little more than juvenile and growing them into very old trees. And that's, I think, what we, we have an opportunity to do that here and that would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, my name is Phoebe Dunbar and I live up on Henland. And I want to thank you guys for the presentation. I had no idea about the scope of this project mainly because we weren't able to be at the charrette, but I do want to just kind of reinforce some of the comments that Brenda Parkinson made. Do you know, it's a little overwhelming to see this because there's so many unknowns of who, what, who and what those partnerships could look like. And I think if some of those, some of those quadrants or whatever we wish to call them are not known, it's really important to keep some of the integrity of that site, which is so special and the opportunity is so unique to make something very, very proud for Suk. And I, too, would like to make a comment of how important it is to leave some of those trees there if they are special and I like the idea about getting an arborist in. So then you have a much better idea. But if those, if those kinds of principles, in addition to the concept, aren't set aside now, you could lose those opportunities. And when I've, I've lived here for about 40 years and I've seen a lot of trees go and even, even some of the trees now have gone in front of Edward Mill and the flowering trees. And we have no idea what's going to happen to the other end of that boulevard. But, you know, once upon a time, Evergreen Mall was known for its evergreens. And today, I kind of wanted to break into that fenced area, but I thought I might get caught. So, you know, I looked from Western Fields and it was nice to see that there are a lot of perimeter trees, but I, too, if I, the people that I've talked to, everybody's talking about that creek, they're not calling it a ditch or a little stream. And I think some very imaginative things could be done to conserve water where it's needed on that property. And, you know, if those aren't marked into the plan, for the final plan, which is coming out really fast, if it really is February, that's just, that's within a month. And I just think these opportunities, we just can't miss out on them. So that's all I really want to say, is really be careful of the trees that are there that have value, that have meaning, they are healthy, and, you know, design can maybe work around some of that. I really want you to kind of consider all those really important things because that property is not as big as we think it is, you know? Is it really only five acres? I thought it was always 10 acres. Anyway, so be careful, new council, and we look forward to see what comes up.
Any other comments?
Alan Lures, 5526 Phillips Road. I concur with what Phoebe said as well, as well as we're looking at an OCP review. And being on the OCP before, this whole concept was to be right in downtown Suk and that's what our OCP was. And I think because we're doing an OCP review, I think this is a little premature. I don't think we should be looking at putting all our eggs in one basket when we're, when we don't know what the whole community wants us to look like. And as nice as it might be, it might not be, because there's other opportunities and I think we have to hear from all of Suk and do our OCP properly. And for sure, there is a creek there and for sure, that creek has to be protected. And there's, and the trees, I totally agree. That creek runs into Knots Creek, it runs all into that canyon, there's a very, it's a sensitive area, all of Suk is, and we should be respectful of that. And that's what our OCP has said, we long to be respectful of our environment. We say wild by nature, where the forest meets the sea, well, where's the forest? So we really need to be respectful in respect to our water. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, Christina St. Pierre, 2385 Phillips Road. In discussion with some of the young people in the room, some of the really important concerns that were brought up is whether the farmer's market would have a place for children to play and whether the Lot A development would have a playground that would be accessible and interesting to children. And I thought that was a really good question to bring up because there's discussion of some space, but I haven't seen enough detail yet on the proposed plan. I also have a second feature I'd like to see included, if it hasn't already been, and that's just, in terms of our community's values, I would really hope that we would be looking to build a place for public space that is non-commercialized. I love the idea of having amenities available, like the proposed coffee shops, but I would love to see us have some indoor and outdoor spaces for public use that don't require that you spend money for services. I think that as a community facility, that's what we need in order to allow for gathering, to allow for community spirit to build, for us to know our neighbors and integrate what we were discussing, what I've heard, mentioned, the seniors and the youth. There needs to be a place where people can congregate and share and celebrate and come together without needing to spend money. That's my hope.
As the mayor says, going once, twice. I see our consultants are taking notes, copious notes. Would you like to come back up?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Through you really quickly, I don't, I'm not going to get into specifics, but nothing I've heard from the public is anything, I think, to be alarmed by. It's all, I mean, with respect to water management, tree retention, as well as the integration with the official community plan, playground and, and non-commercial amenity space. All of those are things that we are working to address and will continue to refine and integrate in the proposal. So I'm, nothing, nothing is scaring me yet, so that's, yeah, no, so I appreciate the feedback and our contact is on the suklat.com website and if people want, they can reach out and provide more. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Counselor Logan's?
I just wanted to touch on some of the comments as well from the public. First, thanks for bringing that forward. It is stuff that I've heard throughout the community as well as at the charrette as well. And this is one of the greatest things that I like about this rendering that's come to council tonight, is the potential for community space and to create a sense of place on Lot A, because one of the biggest concerns from the charrette was having enough green space, making it feel open, making it feel like a communal space where you can come and visit there and not necessarily have to spend money. You're not necessarily there to go to the library or the seniors center or the health center, you're just there to be, to enjoy the outdoors. And that was one of the biggest reasons we cordoned off a big section of Lot A just for open space. And that's also why I like the staged potential development, starting with just a green park area in the bottom southeast corner, because that corner as well brings in a lot of daylight for half the day. It comes through that corner and Evergreen Mall as it stands currently kind of blocks it in the middle, but you get really nice morning light, really nice afternoon light with that park space in the first phase of that development. So in terms of having it as a community space, I think that's probably the biggest thing that I see from this rendering. The other thing that I enjoyed was the placement, and I know this will, this can change, as we decide what will actually end up going there, past the consultant's involvement in this project. But I can see in this rendering, the way that the buildings are arranged provides for an open space. And that was one of the things that I disliked about the other, about one of the other designs, the preliminary designs, was that it blocked off that sort of open feel. Whereas this design, because of the L shape of the buildings, it actually creates like a center that you can meander from one end to the other and it feels quite open. So hopefully that does address some of the concerns. And as far as playgrounds, thank you very much for bringing that up. I think that's fantastic for your input there. And again, that's something that can come later in the design phase, but it's definitely great input to have, so thank you for that. And again, yes, I do agree with keeping the trees there and that was one of the reasons that design, phasing the design is nice as well, because I believe a lot of those pockets of trees were in those park areas on the lot. I think I've talked enough now.
So I think the final notes, I'll just reiterate those, those expressions from the vision statements on our, in the initial part of the charrette. And there was these expressions, clean, green, accessible, and setting tone for development in Suk's town center. And both of those came from one of the EMCS leadership students who joined us, who is, who wants to be a planner at Ivy and I think, I forget his name, but very bright.
Tim Ross.
And so this, and when we talk about final plans, I think what we're seeing will be a final plan as presented to us by Key Corp. And we will continue to tweak it and modify it and Ebony's idea, Counselor Logan's' idea of moving forward with the southeast quadrant and locking in those green values in this is, makes a lot of sense to me. So any other comments or questions? Okay. So, one more from Counselor Parkinson.
Through you, the chair. So I'd just like to say, seeing as how we are implementing our tree bylaw, I think it would be prudent of council to implement or to have an arborist walk the property and mark the trees that we have there so that we know which section of the park should be saved without being taken down. So I would like to move a recommendation forward to council that we do hire an arborist to walk the property if it hasn't already been done.
Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Thank you.
Through the chair, I would like, I would appreciate if staff would bring back a report on the creek, the ditch, the waterway. Thank you.
Through the chair, I did, I looked into it and there's nothing registered on title or anywhere on Lot A of any kind of water course that I could find or any history of. I'm not sure where else to look for that. There's nothing, nothing on title.
We didn't have any discussion on the motion, but we can discuss when it comes to council, but we will have to consider where the funding will come from for the arborist. But we can talk about that on the day of. And then I'd like to move the recommendation that council receive and endorse the plan as per staff recommendation.
Counselor St. Pierre? Oh, that was a vote. That was a, are we all voting and, okay. So have we reached the end of this particular segment of the Committee of the Whole? Thank you. Let's do that. Shall we take a five-minute break? So, we're all back, council's back in business, and we have a 4.2 on the agenda, cannabis retail stores, proposed application process and regulations. And we have a staff report from Mr. Di- Dibler.
So through, through the chair, staff have prepared this as a follow-up report to the one that you remember that was brought forward at the November 26th regular council meeting. That report summarized the implications and role of local governments in relation to legalization of cannabis for recreational purposes. This particular report is dealing just with cannabis retail stores. Production will be addressed at a later date. Staff are proposing one process for the application and review of cannabis retail stores, and have brought forward two alternative options for their regulation, one which is more restrictive and one which is less restrictive. So just to be clear, these are purposefully contrasting. The goal is to initiate a thoughtful discussion about which approach is desired, or if a hybrid approach is desired. So, as this is committee of the whole, it's just, the recommendation is to accept the report for information, and also recommend to council to direct staff to prepare any necessary bylaws and/or policies pertaining to the regulation of and application process for cannabis retail stores. So, this may be a little small to see on the screen there, but I'll first go through the proposed process. From the point which an applicant submits their application for a cannabis retail store license to the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch, or LCRB, to when the applicant is eligible to obtain a district business license. So, staff are proposing a two-step process, which is highlighted here in the flow chart. Step one would begin after the application is made to the province, to the LCRB. At that point, they will refer the application and require a response from the district, which is either an acceptance or a rejection. It will be directed, it's proposed, it would be directed to planning staff, who would conduct a preliminary review to determine if the proposed location is zoned to permit a cannabis retail store. So this would be the preliminary determination of whether to accept or reject the application. Acceptance would be in green on the flow chart. The red would be if an application is not accepted by the district. At that point, the provincial application process would not be allowed to proceed at all. So as long as the proposed location is zoned to permit cannabis retail stores, this will be a very basic zoning bylaw compliance, even if it doesn't necessarily meet the regulations that we will discuss later, it would be accepted, because variances could be sought. When, when an application is accepted, the LCRB would be informed, and the applicant would be, would be notified for step two, which would be the green path. At that point, it's proposed, the applicant would be invited to submit a district application, which I've referred to as a cannabis retail sales permit, and they would have to pay the associated fee, which is proposed to be $3,200. Once a cannabis retail sales permit application is submitted, staff will begin the more thorough review. During this time, referrals will be sent out, as is typical of planning files, and staff will prepare a report with our recommendation to council, with notifications sent out to solicit public comment and feedback. At the council meeting itself, staff will present the report to council, and council will essentially have three options for the cannabis retail store. So option number one would just be a rejection of the application. So if that was the case, the applicant would not be able to obtain their license from the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch, and therefore could not obtain a local business license. So there's no way they could operate legally their business in the District of Sook. Number two would be to approve the application, just without any comments or any other concerns. And then, of course, they would go on to the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch, who has the final say about if they could still reject it at their level, but we would send our approval. There is a third option, and that would be to have an approval with conditions. So it could be hours, or size, or something to that effect, in either, or it could be with variances as well. So if we propose regulations that involve separation distances, for example, which I'll get to in a moment, you could approve it, but say with a variance to allow it to be within a certain distance of, say, another store or a school. And yeah, so like I mentioned, it could still be rejected at the end of this process. And if it's, if it is approved by the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch, then a local business license could be applied for and gained. So that would be the end of that whole process. It's proposed that this would be outlined in the development application procedure policy. So that's where we have our other application procedures for, for other developments. Okay, so I'll move into the two proposed regulations options now. So these are just the set of regulations that could potentially be put in place. And like I mentioned, they're meant to be very contrasting, and if committee so desires, it could be mixed, and a hybrid could be created. But these are just to sort of spark a discussion. So the first option would be the most permissive option for the proliferation of cannabis, or the, just the allowance of cannabis retail stores in the District of Sook. It's, would allow the use in any zone where retail is a principal use. So essentially, it would be added to the definition of retail as is, it would just be in addition to that, that definition. And any of those zones listed there could support that use. The only other restriction proposed would be a 100-meter minimum separation distance from school properties. So what would that look like? Well, there's an example there. So, that shows, you can see the four, or sorry, five schools in the district with 100-meter buffers surrounding their properties. Town center area with all of our commercial zones that support retail as a principal use are highlighted in red, and the existing retailers are those green circles. As you can see, none of those three retailers are impacted by such a permissive host of regulations, and it's, most commercial properties are still, would still support cannabis retail. Now, the opposite, option two, would be a much more restrictive approach. So in option two, we would have a clear and separate definition for cannabis retail stores in the zoning bylaw. So not just being lumped under the definition of retail. That would mean that you would, it would have to be specifically added to certain uses to, to support cannabis retail stores as a use. In this case, it's being proposed that the C2 general commercial and CTC town center mixed use would be the two that would support it, based on what they currently, the uses that they currently support, and the locations in the district. It's also proposed for a much larger minimum separation distance between these stores and schools. It would be 300 meters, as opposed to 100. In addition to being a separation distance from schools, it's proposed that a 300-meter separation distance would, would have to be from parks with playgrounds, licensed daycare facilities, as well as group, we've determined, refer to as community facilities. So that would be the library, the community hall, and sea park. In addition, would be a 300-meter separation distance from other cannabis retail stores. So with an, with an exemption for those in the town center to account for the current two locations, which are in close, very close proximity in the town center, and just to account for the high concentration of commercial development in the town center. As well, there's a limitation in this option for the size of the stores. It's, it's quite large. It does align with our small commercial business license category, and it is what the B.C. cannabis stores in our discussions indicated was the largest facility they were looking at for a store. So it's just as another way of having that clear, that we would not want large stores, especially as anchor tenants to some of our commercial properties. As well, there's a limitation on hours. As it is, the province allows stores to be open from 9:00 in the morning to 11:00 p.m. So this would just reduce those hours from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for all cannabis retail stores. And what does that look like? So maybe it doesn't quite show up super well on the screen there, but the blue buffers are again present, in this case surrounding not only the school properties, but also licensed daycare facilities as of last week. The green would be parks with playgrounds, and as well as the community center, the community hall, library, and the existing retailers, once again in green, showing the buffers around them. So it's hard to see there, but all of the, two of the current would be impacted by such a host of regulations, the two in the town center, because of the, the schools and the other, the daycare facilities around there. And most commercial properties, the C2 and the CTC in this case, would be, would not be available for cannabis retail store use. So just a couple other considerations that, that weren't necessarily covered in the regulations, but committee of the whole, at their discretion, you may wish to consider still, is the fact that we do still have a moratorium in place on the granting of retail licenses, business licenses for cannabis retail stores. So if it was desired to increase the number, or to allow more to, to gain licenses, that would need to be lifted. Sensitive land uses, as the grouping, I've referred to as those daycare schools and other land uses. If any daycare were to locate within the buffer of a pre-existing cannabis retail store, this may create difficulties. It's not quite clear how that would, how that would be treated, although we've been in discussion with other municipalities to see how they have dealt with that. And there is the possibility still to, in terms of process, delegate approval authority to staff instead, if council wishes not to go through the whole council process that was highlighted earlier. And another important thing as well, that staff is just trying to, will figure out after the results of, hopefully, this meeting, is whether all the regulations would be in a policy, or if they would be in the zoning bylaw. So regulations are, the rules aside, where they're actually located is another matter. So that would be, that would be something that will be determined. In terms of timeline and next steps, because, because I know that, you know, many people would like to see this, see this go on, so this is what's, where we're currently at. Staff will determine the appropriate regulations based on discussion today, and perhaps council direction. That would be, you know, coming up very shortly. Staff will consult with targeted stakeholder groups. We conducted a meeting two weeks ago with the existing retailer, representatives from the existing retailers, and hope to do that again as we have, as we move along in the process. Bylaws and policy, and/or policies would be drafted by staff. Draft bylaws and/or policies would, of course, be reviewed by legal counsel to ensure that they're appropriate. And proposed bylaws and our policies would then be brought before council. Hopefully, we're looking at a timeline of late February, early March, before, or then able to begin accepting and reviewing applications in late spring. That would be the, the goal. And so, yeah, I'll just leave this. This is the summary of the two options that are proposed. Nice comparison chart there, so I will turn it over to council or committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dibler. The, just, the proposed process, step one, step two, is that a, evolving into a best practice in other municipalities, that particular way forward?
Yeah, to the chair. Yeah, the, the flow chart and the process was certainly based on looking at other municipalities, maybe not the idea of breaking it down into step one and step two. That was just for clarity, because the first thing we have to even do is decide if we're even willing to accept. So right now, we have, I believe, three that we have accepted. So that's the first, but we haven't worked on them, but that's the first step for any future applications, would be for us to either say, we're going to look at this, or we're not even going to look at it. So that's like, that's, that's the reason behind the step one and step two. Step, step two is the point where they're actually, we're actually looking at it.
Well, thank you. So questions and comments? Counselor Bettes.
Yeah, I'm glad you gave us two options. I'm exploring this option two, which I prefer, with the exception of, I like the idea of the minimum separation from schools, because middle schools and high schools especially, 300 meters, 1,000 feet. I don't necessarily agree with the minimum separation from parks, playgrounds, licensed daycares. I don't think they're going to be unduly influenced by that. So I'm in favor of the option two, but I would reduce the minimum separation distance in parks and playgrounds, et cetera, to 100 meters from 300 meters. And I am certainly in favor at this time to do limit it to the three stores. I think that's quite adequate for the size of our community. And I would prefer to see that they stay private as opposed to public, so that's just my thoughts on the matter.
Counselor McMath.
I just want to add on to Al's, sorry, Counselor Bettes' direction. I would change the limit on the hours. I wouldn't cap it at 9:00 o'clock, I would extend it till 11:00, so they can stay in competition with the other local businesses.
Okay, Counselor Parkinson.
Through you, through you, chair. I was, I was just curious as to the hours that the three businesses have right now.
So through the chair to Counselor Parkinson. Based on our meeting, I was informed that I believe a couple of the businesses are open past 9:00 o'clock currently, and I believe they, the two that are currently in operation, I'll have to have representatives here if they wish to speak to that.
I'd like to know what the hours are. And the other thing is, for the size limit, how does that affect the three businesses that are in operation? Are they of that size, or are they bigger?
So, yeah, based on our meeting, they are all well below that size-
Within compliance.
And did not indicate any concern with having a size limit of that.
Okay, that's great. And I tend to agree with Counselor Bettes with option two. And I thought the 300 was excessive for the distance around. I'm not sure what, how, what the distance is, like, what 200 meters are they within distance from the schools? Are they okay with that? Or does it have to be lower?
Sorry, could I just get clarification?
Sure.
Who would be okay with that?
You had 300, you have 300 meters.
Yeah.
Counselor Bettes said 100. So I was just asking if 200, if that was sufficient for all three businesses to be in operation.
Okay.
I can't, yeah, it's hard to see there.
It's very difficult to see on that, but I have prepared, there's another, this would be the 200-meter option, what it would look like. It's a very, a bit difficult to see.
So would that work, the 200, or no?
Based on our meeting, I was informed that I believe a couple of the businesses are open past nine o'clock currently. And I believe they, the two that are currently in operation, I'll have to have representatives here if they wish to speak to that.
I'd like to know what the hours are. And the other thing is for the size limit, how does that affect the three businesses that are in operation? Are they of that size or are they bigger?
So, yeah, based on our meeting, they are all well below that size and did not indicate any concern with having a size limit of that.
Okay, that's great. And I tend to agree with councillor Beddoes with option two. And I thought the 300 was excessive for the distance around. I'm not sure what, how, what the distance is, like, what 200 meters are they within distance from the schools? Are they okay with that? Or does it have to be lower?
Sorry, could I just get clarification?
Sure.
Who would be okay with that?
You have 300 meters.
Yeah.
Councillor Beddoes said 100. So I was just asking if 200, if that was sufficient for all three businesses to be in operation. I can't, yeah, it's hard to see there.
It's very difficult to see on that, but I have prepared, there's another, this would be the 200 meter option, what it would look like. It's a very difficult to see.
So would that work, the 200 or no?
I just wanted to clarify that I was okay with the 300 meters for the school zones. It's the distance in parks and playgrounds that I would like down to 100. But the school can stay at 300. I don't think that is bad.
Oh, yeah. So for, for the existing retailers, with the 200 meter option, the two in the town center would appear, it's a little bit rough on the map, but it would appear still be impacted by buffers, in this case from the community hall and the daycare, if those were to be buffered, a part of that. 100 would still likely be, well, no, 100 meters would be, would be okay, yeah.
I just might want to add through the chair, you could remove things like community center. You can hybrid this up.
And the Lions Park as well, I would think. Councillor Loggins.
Thank you. I think we seem to be on a similar page, at least those who have spoken so far, is keeping what we have now. I'm not in favor of removing the moratorium at this time. And just keeping the private ones we have at the moment is fine. And I agree that we don't need to cap the time at 9:00 P.M. I think that we haven't had a recent update from the RCMP, but the last one we did have, they didn't seem to have any issues with the locations, and things are going smoothly as far as I know. So I would like to hear further from them and perhaps gather their input on, in terms of limiting hours, but I don't think that's something that we need to do. And I also agree that keeping the 300 meter distance from schools is important, but perhaps not necessarily having a buffer for the community facilities, daycares, and parks. I don't find that extremely necessary. So I think, I think we're kind of all on the same page.
Councillor St Pierre.
Through the chair to the staff. I just have a couple of small questions. One of them is how are, where are liquor stores presently in this? Are they under a general retail designation or are they under the second option? Or something else altogether?
So in terms of a zoning regulation, I believe they're under general retail, but there are no rules about separation distances from liquor stores currently.
Okay. And the $3,200 application fee, is that returned if the application is not accepted? Just curious.
So that would, yeah, that would be paid once they kind of begin that step two. So we've already accepted and reviewed it, but you're saying, if I'm just to clarify that they would go through and then council would not accept that and they would reject that. That's something that's certainly worth considering. I haven't, haven't thought about that.
In those cases, generally.
Can you repeat the question?
The $3,200 application fee. If council rejects the application and, you know, that's it for that application, is that returned to the applicant? No? Okay. That's it?
If I can just elaborate on that a little bit. Those fees are, are to cover the rezoning fees and the public hearing process that would go along with that rezoning. So those are our, our general fees that we have for that.
It's an application fee, yeah.
And if I could also just clarify in regards to councillor Beddoes' comment about staying private in regards to the public part of it. The Provincial Cannabis Control and Licensing Act and the Cannabis Distribution Act establishes the distribution system and retailing license scheme for recreational cannabis. So the B.C. liquor and cannabis regulation branch is administering the retail sales and licensing. So it still has to go through them. So it's still sort of a public, if that's the way you're intending to express the term.
Yes, tone, councillor St Pierre.
And this will be more in the lines of a general comment. At this point, knowing that the liquor stores are generally, are under general retail. I feel like, at this point, option B presents us with more regulations to figure out, more stuff to police, more stuff to consider in terms of applications. It makes for a more complicated process by a long shot. Given that cannabis is now legal, I don't understand why we would go and put that extra work on staff and on ourselves. So I'm questioning whether or not we really want to go with option two. So just a little thought.
Ivy Campbell. Head of planning.
Thank you, through the chair. Just some other things to consider when you're bouncing between the more permissive and more restrictive. To think of it as a sort of a risk analysis decision. How big is a risk if you have a retail cannabis store with no setback from a playground, park, library, community center? These setbacks are typically meant to address temptation or perceived temptation. So you're not typically tempting a toddler to go to a cannabis store. It's more about like teenagers, for example. And also, the province has legislation on what's visible. They have to have like frosted windows. You're not supposed to be able to see. Even their signage can no longer have the leaf, like the obvious cannabis leaf. So as a head of planning, from my perspective, the risks very low. And on another note, through councillor Beddoes, if you did want to institute a rule specific to just private retail versus the provincial stores, there may be some legal ramifications to that. I'm not sure. We should probably look into that.
Through the chair. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not hard and fast on that. I just that I prefer private. But if we're dictated by the provincial government that we have to go to liquor stores as well, then I can live with that. But I'd prefer private.
Councillor McMath is up next.
I just want a clarification for myself. So this is just for strictly cannabis retail stores, with no other product. So if you have like the Buffy's Liquor Store, for example, and they'd like to dispense marijuana in addition to their liquor.
Yeah, to councillor McMath. Co-location, as the province seems, it is not permitted. So that's just a provincial directive, like as well, provincial rule, regulation.
Councillor Parkinson. What?
God, gotta get it back. Oh my God. Oh, I know what I was going to say. I agree with councillor Loggins in that I would like to keep the moratorium on for the time being. Moratoriums can come off anytime council would like them to come off. So if we see how it goes and in two years we decide it's okay, we can take it off and add more if we wish. So I'm okay with the three that are operating to stay operating as is.
Councillor Loggins.
In terms of the distance from schools, I think this varies a bit from a liquor store. Working in a school, I know that it's a lot easier for a teen to be high in school than it is for them to be drunk in school. And not that they would be doing that. We have great teens here. But if you have a location that's walkable and a lot of them have friends who are legal age, it's much easier access to something that they can take part in and still be in school during those hours. So that's why I'm in favor of pushing just the school distance to 300 meters, because it just does address that risk a little bit more. And that is, that is one of the differences between a liquor store.
I don't believe any of our existing stores are within that 300 meter zone, are they? I believe Castle's 600 meters. Yeah. I, I too am in favor of retaining this moratorium for the time being. And I was really excited to see if we have this option to retain only private. Because certain of my people have said, you know, keep corporate weed out of, out of Suuk. And interest in micro cultivation that apparently has been coming forward. You know, there's, there's, here in 2019, you know, Suuk could become known for the best in B.C. bud. You know, and that's a small thing to have. And we have, it's an interesting, you know, I think two of our stores are independents, can be defined as such. And the third is, is of course Shoom and Specialty Marijuana Products, and now the connection with Michael Forbes. And so that's also a different playing field they're operating on. So I, it's, it looks pretty interesting moving forward. What was my point? Oh, here's a question for staff. So step, step, step two is to consult with the targeted stakeholder group again in early February. So, so the public at large, they'll have opportunities through council meetings to step up and, and have their say.
Yeah, so the public engagement portion of the actual implementation or of the regulations would take place as part of a statutory public hearing that would happen prior to the adoption of their bylaw amendments and possibly policies as well, but certainly for the bylaw amendments, there'd be a public hearing. This targeted stakeholder engagement would be more just focused on the current or potential, people who are interested in the retail operations.
Councillor Loggins.
Thanks. Just a side note for staff. I noticed on, just noticed now on here, one of our schools is not marked down. We have the SD62 Alternative Education West Shore Learning Center out of Casa on Waddam's Way. It wouldn't impact this, but just a note.
Councillor St Pierre.
Through you, through the chair to the staff. It was very kind of you to provide two options. I'm curious as to whether or not you are feeling inclined to let us know which one you might prefer in terms of the process, given you've actually been doing all the research. The first one?
Good question.
So we're really considering the second one?
Yes.
But they like the first one?
Who cares?
I've just pointed that out? I like to make sure that's clear.
So, again, back to the, to the risk analysis perspective. Another thing I hadn't mentioned is there are fairly strict rules on consumption, public consumption. So again, distance separation from sensitive uses may be redundant because of those, both federal, provincial, and the CRD, clean air rules. And what I mentioned earlier, the only thing that's consistent on everything that Nicholas has looked at is setbacks from schools. And that is the one consistent everywhere. The others, because the point was to offer you a more restrictive option to look at. But staff is of the mind that the more permissive makes more sense. It is a legal substance, and there is a message or sending when, when you're being overly restrictive. There's an opportunity economically for the district as well. The moratorium, and I believe our deputy corporate officer might have something to say about that, but it's specific to medical marijuana. That's no longer what we're talking about. We're talking about retail marijuana. So, you know, the moratorium, they, the existing businesses have been here for a long time now and have operated successfully with no issue. So if the point of maintaining the moratorium is to continue to test that, I'm not sure it's necessary, in my humble opinion.
Councillor Loggins.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I think that's sort of the way we're kind of discussing things. It seems like option one does fit as long as everyone's cool with the retail zoning. I'm fine with the retail zoning. I don't think, I don't think that the C2 makes sense because it pushes everything outside of the town center. And I don't think we want these establishments in rural, in more remote areas. It's nicer to have them like in a walkable area with a lot of stuff going on. But I'm, I'm fine with the retail zoning. And I think the only thing I would change from option one is just addressing the distance from schools. And then the rest is addressed in option one.
Councillor McMath.
If you want to bring your table back up, if it's easier for everybody. But so we'd keep option one, but basically we'd slide certain things at the bottom of option two over. So I still like having a size restriction on it. And then having set business hours, nine to 11. And then just making clear definitions at the bottom of those ones. That's what I would like to see.
Thank you, Chair. Payman. I'm just, in addition, I also wanted to let you know that the legislation also states that the consumption is restricted on school property, health facilities, or outdoor public places such as parks. So maybe that's taken care of for us underneath the legislation.
Thank you. Okay, councillor St Pierre, and then Parkinson.
Through the chair to the staff again. Actually, I guess this is not necessarily the staff that you might want to pitch in. We're talking about the moratorium here. I had, I thought previously three or four stores was plenty. Mind you, we're going through a process of developing an application process that we don't actually need, given that we have a moratorium. I'm not sure, I mean, does the application process not more or less take care of that sort of thing? Why have a moratorium if we have an application process?
Well, I think these, these stores will need to reapply, will they not, and go through formalized? Interestingly, I went on the, on the B.C. cannabis website, and there's only seven stores currently licensed. Three in Vancouver, two in Kimberly Trail, and in Pouss Coupe, the weed mart is open for business. But everyone else is operating in gray zones at the moment. I'm not, do you have any sense of when, when formal licenses will be issued on a, on a larger scale? Unless the application's coming, I guess.
So in terms of the timeline, like I was saying before, we're hoping would be late spring, based on a timeline of having the proposed bylaws and our policies. Yeah, so whether that will be aligned with our process and the businesses will be able to receive their provincial cannabis license at the same time as they go finish this process, I won't be able to answer. It's up to the province to decide. Hopefully, they've, they've indicated to me that they desire for these processes to work concurrently. But that's, that's all that I know.
Now councillor Parkinson, I think, was next.
Through you, the chair. I still kind of tend to go back to two in regards to when the zoning definition doesn't matter to me. The zones, I, it kind of reminds me in option one of suites where we allow them in every single zone. And then there's parking issues and those sort of things. But when we allow them into the neighborhoods and into the CD comprehensive development zones, I tend to disagree with those two. The other two are on both sides. I still agree with the separation from the schools and the last, the last three as well. Whereas you don't want two cannabis stores side by side, so it's good to have separation between the two shops. And the size and the hours. I'd like to hear from the public, too.
That's all I was going to say.
Councillor McMath.
Just regarding your first point about them popping up in, like next door to each other in different communities and parking problems, is that not a moot point with the whole of the three?
Well, we can change any time, right?
Right, but we would have a discussion about that and then we could revisit. But they'd still have to go through an entire application process regardless. So we could turn it down if it doesn't fit the vision.
Okay, the CAO, Mr. Schaefer.
And your worship, for, for the benefit of me, since I'm still the new kid, I would... And your worship, for the benefit of me, since I'm still the new kid, I would, the resolution establishing the moratorium from 2016 specifically refers to medical marijuana-related storefronts. And it occurs to me, just listening to the conversation, that there isn't necessarily a moratorium on private cannabis retailers for recreational cannabis. Now, I could be wrong, and I stand to be corrected, and it would be helpful for me going forward so that we can work with staff. But that's my understanding, and if I'm wrong, I need to be informed. It's, if council wants a moratorium on the number of cannabis, recreational cannabis stores, then this is not the moratorium that you have. In fact, this one is now moot.
Will you please read out loud what we have?
Sure. The following resolution from the November 14, 2016, in camera meeting is released to the public. The council approve a moratorium on business licenses for marijuana-related dispensaries for the District of Suk and maintain the status quo on the regulation of medical marijuana-related storefronts until federal relations.
That's the key line, I think, right there.
So I think if, when we get to that point, if council wants to specify and make absolutely clear that you're talking about a moratorium on recreational cannabis retailers, that might be an appropriate motion. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate at this time. We'll accept your direction as we prepare the bylaws that we're going forward. But I think a resolution at a council meeting stating that particular thing should probably be brought forward.
Yeah. Good distinction. Okay, Counselor Logan.
I've heard a couple of counselors mention that it might not be, like, why are we going through this? But I think it is an important process to go through because, again, the moratorium can be lifted at any time. We have to be prepared for this, this, sorry, this, the zoning bylaws need to be prepared, and policies need to be prepared in case we do change a moratorium or have an influx of businesses coming to us asking for, for shop space. So I think it is important that we go through this process now and try to figure out as many details as possible without creating too many restrictions, but also putting parameters on, on what we want to see in our town. And I just have a question for Counselor Parkinson as well, because from my recollection of the moratorium, it was not specific to medical marijuana. It was for all, yeah, it was just so that the ones that we have currently would remain, and we wouldn't have additional stores, regardless of whether or not it was medical. That was my understanding of our conversation.
Sorry, just to clarify, because Counselor Logan had indicated that at any time the moratorium could be lifted. And the way that the resolution was made, it is basically null and void now because, A, the first part of the resolution talked about approving a moratorium on business licensing for marijuana-related dispensaries in the District of Suk. We are not responsible now for licensing anymore. It goes through the provincial avenue first before it comes to us. So they're in charge of licensing. So that part is null and void. And the second part leads to the medical marijuana-related storefronts until federal legislation is implemented, and that has now been implemented as well. So this moratorium is null and void and not in effect anymore.
Counselor Beddows.
Understood what you said, and that's very good update, but we can, at this time, request a new moratorium for three if we so wish. So, and that would clear things up for you. You've got clearer direction. Good, thank you.
And I guess, to be clear, we're not, we're not playing favorites here with existing businesses. I believe the moratorium arose out of the will of the community, that we felt three, three was enough in a community of our size. So just to be clear about that. So are we ready for a?
Counselor, and staff, public input.
Public input, yes. So please, I know some of you are in, please come and share your realities. Yes, please.
And Vince Collard, same, Unit 36686, Suk Road.
So we're the owners of 642 Cannabis. First, we want to thank the council and thank planning. You guys have done a ton of work on this, and the council's always been great. We've worked with you guys for the last almost three years. From our standpoint, we love the moratorium. And there's, there's reasons for that, other than the obvious. The dispensaries aren't, a lot of people seem to think we're printing money. We're not. It's a normal business. Once you pay your taxes and do everything, you're looking at pretty normal profit margins on the slimmer side compared to a lot of businesses. You get four or five, and we're all going to go, we're all going to go under. The other thing that's really big is if we do stick to private retail as opposed to the, the government stores, we might all get to stay in business. We've seen some of the pricing lists for legal cannabis. We can't disclose that, unfortunately, but it's steep. And if we, if any of these retail stores want a chance without, without the black market resurging, it's to keep our prices down. We're thinking, there's a very good chance we're going to be losing money for a couple of years until the provincial and federal government figure that end of it out. So, yeah, and that, that also brings back that moratorium and shows how important it is. That's the biggest couple things. Both options are great from our standpoint. Us being, we are open till 11:00 p.m. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but that's, no one really comes in. That's more to kind of give our staff more hours. So if you want to close us at nine, we're not opposed to that either. But overall, yeah, Suk's been great. You've been very welcoming to us. Yeah, and we've been keeping it local. In a perfect world, we'd continue to buy our cannabis locally. Unfortunately, we all know we won't be able to do that. There might be some legal court challenges later against federal government, and who knows? We might be able to bring it back all home and keep that beautiful, small town circle going. But, yeah. Vince, do you want to do that?
I think you covered just about all of it there. Good job.
I got greedy. But overall, thank you for working with us and not against us. Because we're still here.
Yes, Counselor Parkinson.
So with your shop where it is now, you have to do work on it for smell and things like that, or upgrade the property?
We have a pretty intensive, well, our smell's okay. We've, we have a pretty intensive carbon filter system. We bring in, I think, someone smoking a cigarette in the parking lot, we get the smoke inside. But, yeah, there will, there will be a couple very minor things we'll have to do when it comes to that point of licensing. Any other questions?
Good.
Thank you.
And I'm Lori Ratauler from 2604 Otter Point Road.
And we own Riverside Cannabis.
And our store is about 262 square feet, so we're well within the 462 meters squared. And our hours, we're open every day at 9:00 a.m. and till 9:00 p.m. Friday, Saturday till 10:00. Our liquor store is open till 11:00, so close a little bit earlier.
We don't find too much business after those times, but having the option to keep it open if we wanted to, we could, and if we don't want to, we can close it early. So we would definitely stick within those timeframes and not feel any hardship because of that.
And I agree with exactly what Callum and Vince said about the moratorium. It's not like you were making huge money, and we don't want the black market to resurge, exactly like they said. And we do thank you guys for working with us because it is a legal product and, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Parkinson.
Through the chair, it's not a question for you, but I would like to recommend that council place a moratorium on the number of cannabis shops for the District of Suk and limit to three. All right, sorry.
We'll table that for the time being. But, yes, okay, okay. Now, I had a quick question, and I could have asked you two guys as well about this. So you say your supply is local. Is that Vancouver Island? And?
Predominantly.
Suk, predominantly.
Suk, yeah.
When you said Suk might one day have nice cannabis, it does.
The Amsterdam of the West Coast. Yeah, okay.
Are we ready to change our logo?
Thank you.
So my name's Brenda Jordison. I live at 2322 Galena Road. I'm a past cannabis retail worker, hoping to be a future cannabis retail worker in Suk. Obviously, everyone's already kind of said it, but having the three stores in town, to me, is a really big deal. Right now, Langford, nowhere around, has cannabis stores. Soon as Langford opens five, Suk's clientele is going to go way down. So I don't think that we should have more stores, and I don't think we should have a government store. The government is the ringleader. They're going to make the most profits, and I just don't see why we welcome them into our town when we have such a good thing working already. So I just wanted to mention that, and, yeah, pretty much was it, just that I think we, we shouldn't look at getting more retailers. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll close public comment at this point, and I think we have tabled a motion. Can you reiterate that motion?
Do you need it back again?
Oh, it's up here now. Right. So we'll read, shall we make these motions all in one? Would someone like to move?
Seven.
Okay, so I'll read it aloud here. So we're, the motion is that the committee of the whole recommend that council accept the cannabis retail stores proposed application process and regulations report for information. Secondly, that the committee of the whole recommend to council to direct staff to prepare the necessary bylaws and/or policies pertaining to the regulation of an application process for cannabis retail stores. And third, that the committee of the whole recommend that council place a moratorium on retail cannabis shops with a limit of three stores.
So moved.
Can we move them separately? Because the middle motion has not been deliberated.
Okay.
Right, because that's option one, option two, if we can?
Yeah, I agree. I want to move that to option one, option two. All right.
Well, let's, let's get the first one off the table.
So moved.
So moved. All in, all in favor? Okay. We'll talk about the second.
Can we talk about the third first, just to take care of it?
Make the motion.
Okay. Move the third? That the committee of the whole recommend?
With your microphone on?
Sorry. That the committee of the whole recommend that the council place a moratorium on retail cannabis shops with a limit of three stores?
All in favor?
So we'll discuss the options one and two. Staff.
Staff would prefer you be very specific as to which of the regulations you prefer. If it's a hybrid of the two, let's just bullet it out underneath your second motion, if you're prepared to do that. If you prefer that staff come back with more options, that's also a direction you can give us, so we can come back to committee of the whole and then go to camp. It just delays the process a bit, but it depends on your appetite.
I think some pretty good hybrid ideas were brought forward, and can you reiterate them now, what that hybrid would be?
That's our hybrid.
Oh, that's our hybrid. Okay. Counselor Beddows.
Yeah, I think we go back, a little confused near the end, because in the beginning, we were both, everybody seemed to be good for option two, which I still am. The only difference, I would like to go for option two. The 300 meter from the school is perfectly happy with that. The minimum separation from distance in parks, I would like to see, I don't see that need anything to choose, so I'd even go down to zero. And the exemption, town center and the three, we've already talked about, so I would like to go for option two with those two minor changes.
Kent, I have a different one that I wrote down as I was listening to everyone, if you don't mind, Chair.
Can you discuss those? We're discussing them.
Okay, Counselor Parkinson.
So I would like the limit on the hours. I would like that changed from nine to 11.
Shoot, sorry.
So if they want to stay open, they can. If they don't want to, they do not.
Yeah, I concur.
And you mentioned the size limit as well. Okay. Counselor St. Pierre.
I would prefer to keep it as simple as possible, and I think that most people are in favor of keeping a separation from the schools of 300 meters, and I think we should probably do that. But for the rest, I don't see why we shouldn't just go with option one unless there's something in particular that seems dangerous or risky.
Opens the door for the 24-hour marijuana. Okay. Right, Counselor Logan.
I have a question to counsel. I know some of you were concerned about the size limit. I just wanted to know if you could give me more feedback on why that was.
Yeah, Counselor McMath.
I think with the size that Suk is right now, similar to the moratorium, there's not a need for an increase in size right now. So to keep the business concentrated and successful, and those profit margins they talked about, keep it in this size, and if it's a small amendment, it wouldn't be a huge deal to revisit later on.
Counselor? Just to address that point, based on the input from the public, I've got a feeling that the spaces are going to be kept relatively small simply because retail space is extremely expensive and dear in Suk, and they're not going to be able to afford larger spaces. If a larger space was possible, you might do that, but I think it's just, there's a self-limiting factor. I don't think you have to regulate it necessarily. I guess that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, Counselor Parkinson.
Through, through the chair. So are you meaning that it's staying at the 464, or there is, is it not applicable? I wasn't understanding what that was.
Counselor St. Pierre is recommending that we make it not applicable. Yeah. Counselor Logan.
I just want to say you're doing a great job at going back and forth with all our, like, short, random comments. This is great. I also, I don't necessarily feel we need to put a limit on the hours or the size. I think that will self-regulate. And I just wanted to go to staff with a question through you, if possible. The limit on hours, I thought someone said that it would be nine to 11. If, if we went with option one, that was already kind of built in. Am I right, or am I dreaming things?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So the province sets the hour as nine to 11.
That's where it was, the province, yes. So then the hours, we can probably remove from, from that as, as I think we're all kind of in agreement that nine to 11, as the province recommends, is fine.
And there's no point for provincial regulation?
So are we ready for a motion?
Well, I, I would like to make a motion that we go for option two, 300 meters for school, no limit for the parks, playgrounds, et cetera. Size is not an option, so that's basically it.
We can have a discussion on that motion. You're first, and then you're?
Thank you, Counselor Beddows. I'm just wondering if you, if you can perhaps give me a bit more detail on why you are leaning towards the C2 and CTC zones as opposed to retail definitions.
Well, I do like the CTC town center. I think- Well, I do like the CTC town center. I think that we need to have these sort of stores in the town core as opposed to all over the Suuk area. I kind of think with just three of them, I'm sure people can take a bus or they can ride a horse if they want. But it's pretty easily, our community isn't that big, and I'd like to stay in that town center.
So when I, thank you for clarifying, just to follow up on that, when I look at the map, it seems more like what you're describing is the option one retail zoning because that includes the town center mixed use, but then it also includes additional locations that are closer to the town center, whereas the option two is only CT, town center and C2. But C2 zones are currently more spread out and further from the town core, unless it's the case where you're thinking you want to restrict it and limit it from being outside of the town core and just pretty much want it in that area.
Short and long of it, that's true. I would like to keep it in the town core. That was my thought of it.
I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so, yes, you may, Counselor McMath, I'm sorry.
There had been some other suggestions on a previous slide about skipping the council process. Can you talk a little bit more about if it was completely in staff's hands?
Through the chair. Yes, you could delegate this to staff. We would still be required to meet the provincial requirements for public notification, and we would do that through notification mailouts and collect that feedback and incorporate that into a staff report that would result in a recommendation that would go back to the province. And we would also do the external, like, the internal, external referral process like we do with other applications. No, unless they ask for it in a quarterly report. I forgot to add, and if I still have the opportunity to be on?
You do.
The discussion about C2, the, one of the existing businesses is in C2, the Castle location.
So where are you going with the zoning?
Your motion is?
C2, 300 meters for schools.
Start at the top. Of our list there. So it has zoning and the definition, so the C2, the option two.
Now, option two cannabis retail store definition, that is zoning by law, excluded from general retail definition, prohibited uses, that being what? In two zones, C2 general, commercial, CTC town center, the excuse, minimum separation from school and properties, 300 meters, minimum separation distance from parks, playgrounds, licensed daycare, community facilities, libraries, community centers, clinical, zero, minimum separation from other cannabis retail stores, 300 meters, asterisk, and that is exemption in town center, size limit 464 meters squared, limits, hours limits nine to 11, about nine to nine there, and that's then you have a product set.
Yeah.
So that's it.
So, and actually?
And we're gonna retain the size limit, are we?
Sure, it's not gonna be a problem, for me anyway.
Counselor St. Pierre.
I tend to disagree with it not being a problem. It's not a problem now with the three that we have right now, but then we have to go through the trouble of actually changing all this stuff in the future if there's a need. If we add additional restrictions at this point in time that don't actually, aren't needed, then we're just creating problems down the line. We're creating things that we have to change and creating more work for staff. I'd suggest that a little bit more time now to just make sure that we have only the stuff we need is worth it. Keeping in mind that this is still, you know, committee of the whole, so it still has to be ratified by council, so. But I just keep that in mind. Anything that we add in now has to be dealt with by, either by ourselves in the future or future generations of future council.
So if we just add the NA around size limit, then we're off to the races, potentially. Now, we have a member of the public, unfortunately, we closed off the comment period. Who has?
Does, yes. Just a clarity, Chair, regarding the size. So there's no restriction on size, or you're going with the size? Not applicable. Thank you.
My motion. Sorry, through the chair, my motion was that, when I read it out, it was the 464 meters square. And I think, I don't think it's gonna present a problem for years to come.
No. There'll be no wheat marts.
And your suggestion, or Mr. Chair, just, again, for additional clarity, all this material will be brought back to council for further discussion. So the decision that you make this evening isn't necessarily the final.
Yes, okay, thank you. So it's, we have a motion on the floor. I think we're, oh, Counselor McMath, are you? Size is not on there just yet.
464 meters square.
So that's on it currently, so we're not making that change to option two. So it's, so I think we're ready to roll. All set? Counselor Parkinson has suggested we hear from our bylaw officer, since she's here tonight.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Through the chair, I was just requesting that if the bylaw enforcement officer had anything she would like to add to the conversation, it would be appreciated. And if not, that's fine.
Chair and council, planning staff have done considerable work on the file in consultation with the three proponents that are vying for business licenses and provincial approval to operate in Suuk. From my conversations with the RCMP, they expect no changes in the level of service that they're going to be required. They've had no problem to date. The issues that they have are not from legal retailers, but from elsewhere. So this will have very little or no impact. Currently, the three retailers, or the two and the one previous, have been an asset to Suuk. They are involved in Suuk, and they've drawn no negative attention to themselves. So the bylaw department is fully in support of them moving forward and leave it in your capable hands to figure out which options work best. I don't really have anything else to add, that the process will work itself through, you know, provincial regulations are covering up most spaces. It's just the minutia that is required from council.
All in favor? Okay. Hello, I think we, hello. No new business tonight, and so we'll have? Yeah, Counselor Loggins.
I just wanted to touch on the conversation about delegation to staff, and perhaps we could talk about that since we are in committee of whole, just for a short period, or not, totally fine. But my thoughts on that were just that I think going forward in the short term, we should probably bring the applications to council so that we can receive public input, at least to see for the next couple of years how things roll out. And then after that, I'm completely comfortable delegating that to staff. And once we make sure that this is a bylaw that works and things are in order, then I'm totally comfortable with that. But just for the time being and the short term, as we do this transition, I'm thinking that it might be best to get that public input if there are any further applications that come forward.
That's just a comment?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, sorry, I just wanted to make sure if there was any discussion on that, that since we're in committee of the whole, it's a good time to talk about it. But if not, that's totally cool, we can move on.
Counselor Parkinson.
Through the chair, I just wanted to add that I agree with Counselor Loggins, and it's great for council to hear what people have to say.
Yes.
Because this is something new to the community, to everywhere, so we should be informed of what's going on because we will definitely be asked questions out in the public, and I like to have answers. Thanks.
So on that note, I think we'll need a motion for adjournment. Tony St. Pierre? Al Betos, okay.